Good evening, everyone. The hour is 5:31. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Danville City Commission for this Monday, July the 22nd, 2019. It will call us all to order. I will ask that we be led in a moment of prayer by Commissioner James H. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's just bow this afternoon for a moment of salience in remembrance of all the things that we are allowed to do in this country. We talk about freedom and we forget about it oftentimes, so let's just reflect silently on what that means to each of us. And in heaven and father, I pray and ask that what we do tonight will be pleasing in thy sight.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask that we be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Michael Mingi, who has decided to join us this evening, and this is what you get when you come in.
(inaudible) United States of America, and the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
That's a nice-looking shirt he's got on there.
Thank you, Michael. Unless I hear otherwise, I will assume that you approve of tonight's agenda. That said, we'll move right into here the public. This is the public's opportunity to take three minutes to address staff and commission on any item that is on tonight's agenda. There'll be an opportunity later on for anything that's not on tonight's agenda. I see no takers. We'll move right on to item one, which is the approval of the minutes of the previous two meetings, being July the 8th and July the 17th. Chair will entertain a motion at your convenience.
I move to accept the minutes as presented from both of those meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Cyrus. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Discussion, corrections, additions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item two is Resolution Number 2019-02, I'm sorry, 07-22-01. This is the Community Arts Center name change, and I believe there is action needed.
I can move that we accept Resolution Number 2019-07-22-01, and also acknowledge that we have the Executive Director in the House.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion, perhaps the Executive Director during discussion would want to take the microphone and give a little bit of history and reasoning behind the name change.
Hello. I just have a small statement. I'm hopeful that you all were able to read the newspaper, and some of you were at our event this week. The Arts Center serves as a creative catalyst, not just for Danville, but for the entire Southern Bluegrass. We're uniquely positioned to deliver high-quality visual arts exhibits and programs for the region, and we look forward to continuing to support Danville's growing identity as an arts destination for tourists and residents alike. Recognizing and embracing the important role that the organization plays for the region, we are moving forward under the name Art Center of the Bluegrass. Our goal was to align our name with the reality of our organization, and we are already serving the region, so we're decided to celebrate that truth. I've decided to read that statement to make sure I get all the words right, and there's no questions of what I'm saying, so...
Speaking of questions, anyone have any questions, Ms. Kincaid?
No, just a kudo naturally. You and your staff have done a great job over there, and I think that the youth of this, not just this county, but the region have benefited from that, so thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And thank you to the city, because we could not do what we do without your partnership.
If there's no other questions or comments, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Item three is the Urban Renewal Board reappointments, and I'm really pleased to announce that they're reappointments, and that is Carl Luttrell and David Payne. And I would like a motion to that effect, please.
I offer motion to approve the reappointments to the Urban League, I mean, Urban Renewal Board.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion? Call the question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item four will be the City Manager Report. Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Commission, I have a number of items to briefly report on tonight, the first of which is the report that the city speedily responded to Dr. Ben Noel's request made to you at their last meeting. We responded within the week to install the personal sanitation device at the Lexington Playground on Lexington Avenue. I'll share with you that we intend to keep that on place and on site. It's a handicapped accessible unit, and we were able to get that for $125 a month, and we'll plan to have that during the peak months of use of that, but probably not have it there in the wintertime or less than peak usage. But anyway, we're happy to address that need as expressed to us. Also, in the general area of the Lexington Avenue Park, I would say our engineering and Public Works Department are to be commended for exceptional dedication during the past week or so in very high temperatures of working to complete the required formings to pour concrete and to have that poured in a very difficult access place, and they will be installing all the fittings, or our contractor will be, and we hope to have that in operation, I'll say mid-August. It's a little bit late for the season, but we still should have some enjoyment of that before our summer months end, so we're happy with the progress we're making there. Last, City Commission, we ask about any progress report on the joint agreement on Parks and Recreation with the, between the city and the county. I have not had any further outreach or communication to me by the county judge or any of the county magistrates on this, so I presume they're still considering the last document we sent to them. We had a question at wayfinding at our last meeting about where we were with implementation initially of our wayfinding signage. I'll have to report we've not made any progress to date on this issue. We did approve the plan. It was to be brought in steps to the City Commission for review before implementation of each stand or each section of that signage plan. Our key coordinator of that, Earl Coffey, has been on a vacation the last couple of days, and I have not had a chance really to chat with him about that. It's on our list, but it's one that we frankly have not, to my knowledge, made any progress on. He may have filed some preliminary encroachment permits with the state that I'm aware of, but it's on our to-do list. We also had discussions at the last meeting about progress, if any, on the desire expressed to make improvements to the decorative water fountain in Whisker Park. Last time, Mr. Coffey said he had a meeting scheduled later that week with Representative Branstad or Carroll, Monica Sumner. They did have that meeting. My understanding is that they are considering the firm's response, and given the short timeline between the meeting and now, I don't have anything concrete or detailed to report on that, but we are pursuing the topic. The next item I wanted to mention is that we will soon be beginning a process of updating our master plan in Bellevue and Hildale Cemeteries. Carmen has provided a proposal to update the plan that he last produced, I think in 2007. The master plan update will address the current conditions of each cemetery, revisit the conclusions of the 2007 master plan, and contemporize those recommendations, and address new trends in community cemetery interim options and management. Recall that we did purchase that residential lot at the entryway to Bellevue. That will be part of the master plan update of study, and we will see how that can best be utilized to serve as a growth opportunity in Bellevue Cemetery. This process will begin fairly immediately. We expect to have input from Danville Cemetery Committee, as well as any other interested persons, including the various funeral directors, in updating that process. And as an aside to that, I will say that in the budget, in our capital budget section this year, you might recall that we are planning to construct two shelters, one in each cemetery that was approved in the budget, and that was in the master plan as last completed, and so we are proceeding with developing bid specifications for the construction of those two shelters as well, as recommended by our cemetery committee. I wanted to again mention to you that our compensation study has started utilizing HANA Resources of Lexington, Kentucky. We've provided all their data requests as of last week. All positions, all full-time positions in the city, I should say, will be evaluated with compensation ranges and competitive market recommendations for those ranges to be made to me as City Manager for all full-time city positions. This study should be completed realistically in early October of this year. On our work agenda is a review of our city personnel policies, as well as the pay-in-class ordinance that we're required to adopt each year. We're in final legal review on the city's personnel policies. Those will be recommended to you for consideration and adoption at your first meeting in August, as well as our pay-in-class ordinance at that time should be on the August 12th agenda. You might have seen, driving around the 127 bypass, that the city of Danville is in the 127 yard sale business. We have signs out indicating that we do have spaces for rent. This was a function that the fairgrounds did provide to the greater community, and we're continuing that effort in an attempt to bring people to our community and eat in our restaurants and stay in our hotels. The dates of the yard sale operation, while we're renting spaces for the entire week, the actual yard sale dates will be the traditional dates of Thursday, August 1 through Sunday, August the 4th. Our rental of spaces may not be quite as large as in prior years. We get off to a little bit of a late start in terms of the transition. I think we have 30 or so spaces rented at the present time. We have food vendors there. It should pick up still quite a bit before the opening of that event. The dates of the yard sale also remind me that beginning August 1 will be the implementation, as informally announced, I guess, by Kentucky Department of Transportation, District 7, of the lane reduction test trial that they intend to implement for a six-week period beginning August 1. They have said through emails that they will, there would be a public discussion locally following this trial of the new lane configuration to review and discuss the results obtained from that study with our local populace. That again is going to result in some lane reduction and striping changes downtown on US 150, otherwise known as Main Street, but actually under the control of DLT 7 as a state highway, and so that is what is on the horizon. We announced at our last meeting our downtown master plan, RFP, and the ability of firms who might have an interest in quoting on that to respond. We've had a robust response from quite a number of firms. We've extended the deadline for an additional two weeks in order to give all firms an opportunity to complete a submittal. The new receipt of that, I believe, is Wednesday, August the 14th. As you know, but as our audience may not know, we met at 4 o'clock this afternoon to review the six firms making proposal to assist you in the next City Manager search process. Your decision this afternoon reduced those six firms to, three firms, to be interviewed, and we're scheduled to do that by Skype interview process this Wednesday, July the 24th, and to presumably make some decision on a selection of a firm following that Skype interview We had tonight the announcement of the Community Arts Center making a name change organizationally in order to announce that regional presence and also to be in compliance with the need for technicalities with regard to alcohol sales and use. I would also mention that we are in the early stages of revising or looking at revisions to the current rental agreement with the Community Arts Center, and will continue to work on that and possibly have a suggested change in the rental agreement to the City Commission in the next couple of months, two or three months. And one final item that I would mention, and that is, many of you will recall, quite a few years ago, that we had a historic log structure that was taken down, that used to be in place on Third Street, and it has lived in this place or that place since that time, and for the last number of years, has been in our Public Works Building. We continue to make plans to more completely renovate our Public Works Building and to make it more useful as a working space for us, and quite frankly, those logs are an impediment to the productive use of that building, so I'm going to ask the City Commission to come up with some process, or engage me if necessary, in some process to make a determination of where we can move those logs for a productive purpose. They are not particularly insured in that building. They're an item there. They could be lost during our storage. We wouldn't want that to happen, but we need to, after all these many years, determine if in fact we're going to do anything with them or not, and we need to try to reach that conclusion. I would respectfully suggest in the next couple of months, if we can. There's a whole lot of background in that that I'm not going into in terms of the local organization and those that contributed funds to own a share in those logs, but quite possibly they should be convened to have a decision and a discussion about what to do next with those logs.
Could you maybe give, email us some sort of history of those logs?
Sure.
Because I'm really not familiar with what has happened with those.
I will. I'd be happy to. That concludes my report, unless there should be questions about the report.
Ron, I'm going to back up on Parks and Rec. We need to get off a dime on that. Can we reach out to them? Stephen, can you reach out to Chris? And, you know, let's get off a dime. If we've got to have a joint meeting to talk, let's talk.
I agree. I'm happy to reach out in the same way that we've done in the past. However, I would say a non-response is somewhat of a response, unfortunately. It is my hope that we can continue to move forward. However, as I said again, and I always say, process is important, and it's incumbent upon them as a body to make a collective decision, to make their position known. It's not incumbent upon us to pull the position out of them. So, I think through their counsel and their leadership, they need to make, take a position and then make it known. I'm happy to communicate and request it again, but, you know, we've spoken many times about this very issue, and how they come to a decision really is their, it's incumbent upon them to do so.
Well, I just want an up or down. I mean, if we need to have a discussion to hammer some things out, that's great.
And again, I'm happy to have those discussions, but what, it's only, it's critical that we have a decision from their body to see what their position is, because the interest of a particular magistrate is irrelevant if it's not shared by a majority of magistrates. And so it's unfruitful to have a joint meeting without knowing how they stand collectively.
So I will be glad, with your permission. I'll reach out to the judge and ask him to get some kind of, get it on their agenda to have a discussion. Let's figure out where it is. Let's figure out where it is. Okay.
You can, and I do want to caution you against this, though. I think it's important that as a body, they do that themselves.
Yeah.
Because as a housekeeping matter, we don't want to, whatever their decision is, it needs to be theirs.
Right.
And some time has passed since they've had the joint, or the draft ordinance. And just to clarify a few things publicly, just from the newspaper article I've read from their meeting, the court's meeting, they do have their own ordinance, but it's exactly the same as ours. That's what a joint ordinance is. So it's, you know, there was some confusion, well, we need to amend our ordinance, not their ordinance. Well, that's technically true, but it's the same. There's no difference between them. That's why we had a joint ordinance. That's, by definition, that's what it is. So, and there were also comments that the county may want to take their own stab at it. Of course, they're entitled to do that. I would, if they would like to make their own proposal, they are certainly free to do so, and this body will consider it timely. But the city has acted and has pursued a proposed solution to various issues in the most efficient way that we know how until this point. And really, the ball's in the court's, the ball is in the court's court. Yeah. Should've thought about that one before I started.
We got it.
But I agree with you. I'm meeting with the Parks Director later this month to hear some clarifications on their end that may be necessary, and I'm again hopeful that the court will speak as a body to the issue.
Yep. It obviously won't be on their agenda tomorrow, because they don't have, unless it's already there. They've got to give a 24-hour notice.
Sure. And based just on the newspaper article, they were, the magistrates were going to allegedly make comments known to the judge executive, who was going to compile them and give some type of summation. So it's possible that it's on their agenda tomorrow. I don't know. I've not seen it.
Any other questions for Mr. Scott?
Sure, I have four quick ones, real quick. I'm pleased that we reacted so quickly to citizens' request to put a sanitation device, as it's called, out at our water park. I would hope that that may become permanent instead of a portable device. I hope we're going to be looking at that, look at that cost, and try to dress that park up. Also, on the wayfinding, I know that you don't have any information, but we don't want to lose that, so hopefully, next meeting, we can try to move forward with that. That would be great. That's been hanging around for quite a while. Also, for the benefit of the public, when we do this Wednesday Skype interviews, will that be open to the public?
It is open.
Okay. So I want them to know that. And it'll probably be in this chamber?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So, and I'm glad to hear you're going to do something with the log cabin, so you might want to put in that. You asked for our advice, but that gazebo ought to come out of there, too, and go somewhere.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Nothing else, we'll move right on into here the public. As promised, this is the public's opportunity to take three minutes to address the staff or commission on any, yes, sir?
Just a point of clarification regarding Commissioner Cyrus' comments about the Skype interview. He said Wednesday night, I believe, we're planning to begin 12 noon, so in order for the public to be aware of that and to be here.
Nice try, Rick.
We talked about it all the time.
Nice try, Rick.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say, actually, we don't know what the times are, so that, thank you for bringing it up, because I was going to mention that hopefully when we know what times these are set up, it'll go on the website, so if folks want to come, they don't show up at midnight and we're not here. Okay.
Here the public. Mr. Graham was, he was a little quicker, Valerie.
I'm Randy Gip Graham. On July the 10th, the City Manager sent a memorandum to commissioners informing the timeline that the State Transportation Cabinet, District 7, would be instituting a test road diet, Main Street lane reduction. The memo made it seem like the state was keeping us out of the loop regarding the plans, and begs the question, why? Unfortunately, Main Street lane reduction should have been a moot issue. Now, according to an email exchange with State Engineer Logan Baker obtained through open records, Danville's Main Street was to have been paved years ago after the defeat of the road diet. State Engineer Logan Baker asked whether possible to hold off paving since interest in the road diet was waning, and was told no, funds had already been allocated. Then why never paved? Question is, did the Kentucky State DOT violate their own rules? If so, it would be par for the course, since an open records request made to Kentucky DOT, which was supposed to have been handled in weeks, resulted in months, and documents only released the day DOT informed the city the road diet had been canceled. Now, in public forum, DOT Engineer Logan Baker properly informed the community the City Commission would have the final say-so on the road diet, which is proper state protocol. Now, at the time, I was acting chair of a group of downtown business owners called We Are Downtown. We spent hundreds of hours studying the proposal, researching and visiting other cities. We learned comparing different communities is like comparing apples to oranges. Where in Lisbeth Town it was a good thing, in Wolford County it created more accidents. Now, in good faith, we provided logical suggestions, which included a staggered turning signal in Main Street in force to clear the light. We were unanimously against bicycle lanes because of the danger to bicyclists called "doring" and drivers of parked vehicles being held liable. Arguably, the community at the time showed itself against Main Street lane reduction. Over 400 downtown merchant customers signed petition against it. All city commissioners at the time informed our group they'd be voting against it. And all magistrates of Boyle Fiscal Court voted against it in a show of support vote. However, Main Street was never paved with current striping. Why? Now, it seems Kentucky DOT placed leadership, and specifically placed leadership, interest in lane reduction, are playing on public ignorance in order to bypass appropriate protocol, allowing Transportation Cabinet to call the shots. Now, if the City Manager and this commission don't stand up for the proper protocol, can anyone doubt the outcome? It's mine and others' hope the commission will be voting after the trial of lane reduction, thus fulfilling the responsibility parameters of this elected government and following the proper protocol. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Valerie McMahon, the Chair of the Heart of Danville, and I am here to let you all know that the Executive Director Search Committee has done their work and has made a recommendation to the board. The board has accepted their recommendation to hire Dustin Duval as our permanent Executive Director. A big part of the reason that the recommendation was made is because of the great success Dustin has had for the few months he's been on the interim job. I should go back and say, he joined the Heart in the fall of 2017 as our project manager, and since February of this year has served as our Executive Director when Nick Wade went to Covington. Since that time, he has single-handedly, because he's now Office of One, put together a series of profitable Main Street Lives, which is our concert series at Whisker Park every other Thursday this summer, and profitable lawn chair theaters every month, once a month, at Constitution Square. And the way that those have become profitable is that not only do we have concession and... And the way that those have become profitable is that not only do we have concession and drink sales, but more importantly, we've had sponsors for each and every event. And so, that's made the whole series profitable, which is great. The other thing that is going on that I hope all of you already know about is that on Wednesday at 11:30 to 1, the Heart of Danville will be holding a webinar, next, sorry, next Wednesday, July 31st. It will be at the Boyle County Public Library and it'll be a webinar by Roger Brooks on developing critical mass in the downtown. So, you all should have got invitations. We hope you will be there to help us have that discussion, and I really hope that you all will welcome Dustin with open arms, support him, give him ideas, and help the Heart of Danville keep downtown Danville a beautiful place, keep improving it, and thus improving our whole community and making it a better place to work, live and play. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dustin, you don't want to say anything?
Thank you. I'll say, thanks for the search committee. Also, I haven't got to publicly say thank you for Main Street Live. We use Whisger Park. You all gave that to us for free, and it's very gracious of you all. We're so grateful for that. So, I'm going to keep going and keep trying to make it better. I thank you for your support. Thank you for the appropriated funds you've given us this year going forth, and so, we're going to do our due diligence to keep going with it, so make you all proud, hopefully.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right into Commissioner's comments.
Yes, I can do it. So, the first of the memorials for our, sad to say, Johnny Coconhour with our Parks and Rec Department will be this Saturday in a 5K run, Johnny Coconhour Memorial 5K Run this Saturday morning in Perryville. So, we're happy about that, and I apologize, John, if I'm a little ahead of the curve, but Parks and Rec has decided to do a memorial for Johnny, but the family has requested to do it next spring, so it's, it's not that they're dragging their feet, it's what the family wants right now. So, that's, that's coming up, and I just wanted to let people know that he did a great job for us, and it's sad that he's not with us anymore, but anyway. And the Main Street Live this Thursday.
Anyone else?
I was gonna just give a shout out, I guess, to Pioneer Playhouse. That was a great play they invited us to. I enjoyed that very much. So, if you can get a chance, go out and check that one out or, or the next one. It's, it's always good evening.
We left it open for you two. You know, the Irish are here. Speaking of Pioneer Playhouse, the Irish are here. We'll be shamrocking again before too long.
If, if there's nothing else, I do want to address Heart of Danville because that is part of our pay the bills session, and it's a large line item. And Valerie and I had a frank, open conversation today, and I'm going to request publicly that the Heart go back and revisit this annual letter of commitment, and perhaps all of us together need to sit down and go over that because I think we've gotten away from that quite a bit. Part of this says, we, we want a written plan of action. I mentioned that to you this morning. I also mentioned this morning that it would be my desire that the Heart of Danville rebuild their finances because as I said, and I've said in this room many times, and I think everybody's agreeing with me, that our capacity and capability to continue to fund our nonprofits is going to continue to diminish as we labor to increase our pension contribution. The issue of accreditation, I think, needs to be discussed. We may not want to do that right here, but I think that is definitely something that must be addressed. And I also shared with Valerie that it was my hope that the Heart of Danville focused back onto hard economic development and, and preservation, that those, those need, those are the things that really, long-term, in my estimation, are going to bolster our downtown and, and, and help us keep our, our historic identity. Have I said anything that we didn't talk about, Valerie? Okay. Anybody else?
I was gonna wait and have a general discussion under payment of the bills, but I would...
And we can still do that if you wish.
Well...
Why don't you move into it? It's your next item.
Okay.
So, item five is payment of the bills. To hear a motion that we...
For approval of payment of the bills in the amount of $470,000, $470,244.12.
And I will second that with a discussion.
We have a motion and a second with a comment.
I, I wanted to discuss it under payment of the bills because this is the first allocation to our nonprofits and I guess to everyone that we've allocated money to. This is their first quarterly payment. Some of them, depending on the amount, I suppose, received their entire allocation, and so, everyone else, especially the large ticket items, received a quarterly payment, and Heart of Danville is one of those. And as I'm reading this accredited program, annual letter of commitment that the city and the Heart of Danville agrees to, I would agree with the mayor in that, I believe I asked this same question the last time we hired, they hired a new director, was about accreditation and the director's accreditation. I don't, I don't know what that is, but I think the city needs to know where we stand on that. You don't have to answer it right now, unless you just want to, but you know, there are just some questions that, that the city has and that we need to get back, on both sides, we need to get back to adhering to this letter of commitment. And preservation is and should be one of Heart of Danville's main goals and objectives, and I don't think that's been a high priority for Heart of Danville in the last few years. that's my opinion.
Okay. Any further comments, discussion? Go ahead, Kevin.
It seems to me like the issue, as it usually is in something like this, is, is communication. So, perhaps it would be a good idea to get the, us and the Heart together and talk about where we want to go instead of just trying to read each other's minds and, you know, how well that goes. So, it seems to me if we get out and talk about what we expect, what they expect, where they want to go, where we'd like for them to go, that would seem like a good idea to me.
And I also think generally, our policies for these nonprofit allocations need to be addressed. I think our policy needs to be changed. I don't think the city's money should be rolled into an operational budget of any kind, and that, right now, is what has been happening. I, I don't know how that happened. I don't know when that happened, but I believe that our money should be allocated to capital expenditures and seed money for new endeavors for two to three years of that new endeavor. We are going to get a new city manager, and that person may or may not recommend that we make any allocations to nonprofits. So, these are just some things and changes that we need to prepare for, for everyone across the board and not just Heart of Danville.
So, is it, Kevin, is that the commission's desire that we hold a special workshop with the Heart of Danville board, or is there another way that you'd like to go about this? Mr. Scott, you got some suggestions?
I think you would be almost required to have a special workshop where you would come together and talk the issue to meet public meeting requirements.
Could, could, I would like to know what the, the Heart Board thinks, or our new director thinks, or whoever. I mean, what...
Well, I've got a little bit more history, probably.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. I just, you know, what seems like a good idea to me may be a terrible idea. I just want to know what you think.
I think the open lines of communication, I think, are great, so I'd welcome the chance to sit down and talk to you all. I believe that the confusion or the issue with the accreditation is one that we addressed a few years ago in that when Bethany Rogers was here, she had the proper background to allow the city to have CLG status. Okay? When Bethany left, our next director did not have that. But really, ideally for the CLG, it would be somebody with a historic background that served the whole city because obviously, there's preservation issues across Danville, not just downtown Danville. So, at that point, that's when you all hired Joanie because we didn't have somebody with that. That's the ideal situation. So, because you have that person, you're not going to lose CLG status because Dustin doesn't have that background. So, the accreditation, I don't think, is really an issue. Would you agree with that, Ron? And those are the conversations that we had before. So, I'd, I'd still welcome, and you know, if you all think we need to focus more on preservation, we can certainly have those discussions. I would argue also, though, that anything that we can do for economic development, the more people that we can get downtown, the more we can preserve our buildings because our businesses will have more money to preserve their buildings, to remodel their buildings. More people that we have downtown, the more that people will want to locate and revitalize the downtown. So, it's kind of a chicken and an egg thing. I think everything we do does have to do with preservation, even if we don't call it preservation. Even if Main Street Live is not preservation Main Street Live, it's helping because it's getting people downtown.
My concern with that would be, yes, we're getting them downtown, but most everything's closed at that time, and, and now, they, they don't, they don't disperse, they don't walk to town, they don't want to shop, and so, how do we, how do we take that concept and, and tweak it, rework it, remodel it?
Yeah, and I, and I do see your point. Part of the hope is, okay, people come down, they see something that's closed, they'll come back later. Some of our businesses stay open later because of Main Street Live. You know, we can't force anybody to do that.
Right.
So, you're right, but it, and it's a challenge. I mean, most, most purchases, I think, are made after 6:00 PM, just nationwide, and so, if we don't have businesses open downtown, we aren't getting those purchases, but, so it's a nationwide issue, and we are well aware of it and would welcome any suggestions because that's what we're working for every day to try to get that done.
I would see this as a good opportunity for the commission and the Heart and the community, frankly, to have that discussion about the importance of preservation and the four-point approach of the Main Street program, which is grounded in historic preservation efforts. You know, going back a couple of years, we had a, a discussion of this very thing in terms of the hiring decision made by the Heart, the fact that Danville is required by the state heritage commission to have the credential individual. It's not the Heart that is required to do that. It is the city itself in order to qualify for a certified Main Street program. We had members of the community who were not supportive of hiring a full-time historic preservation staff at that time, so we sort of patched and hired a part-time to meet that need, and we have probably greater need than we have staff capability right now. So, it is an issue going forward in terms of how do we successfully do preservation work, not only in downtown, but citywide? How do we integrate the four-point approach of the Secretary of the Interior, those being design, promotion of economic vitality, organization and promotion, all within a partnership arrangement that's contemplated between the private sector board and the city to advance downtown as the place you want to be and that is viable? And you know, there's lots of tools that have come about more recently. The opportunity zone being one of those where we could have a situation develop in the near future where we might have a lot of additional investment coming into the downtown in terms of renovation of upstairs lofts, have more people living downtown. So, it's a pretty exciting time, really, to begin having that meaningful conversation about how do we make this a, really, a very successful part of our community where something is going on most of the time.
Back to what I think, Mayor, you mentioned, or Commissioner Terry, if you're requesting a plan of action, it seems appropriate to allow some of that vision planning to occur at the Heart, and then at some future date, have that presented to you, possibly in writing ahead of time, so that it can be discussed because as they vision plan, it may be exactly what you, and what you would like to see, and it may not, but then it'll allow that conversation to take place once they do their homework, so...
And I would also add, as I just happen to think, you know, we're about to, sometime in the next couple of months, I suppose, select an architect or a firm or consultant to do our downtown master plan. There will be lots of conversation with community groups and individuals about what they want to see downtown. So, all of this, in my mind, kind of comes together as a opportunity to reinvent our future downtown.
Well, and also, our work plan was submitted with our budget request, so even though we haven't talked about that, you all should have access to that, and we'd welcome the opportunity to get together and kind of talk that through.
When would you all like to do that?
Get together with the Heart?
Revisit their work plan? Or do you want to take the next 30 or so days and broaden it and, and... What's the aspiration here?
Well, and that's fine. I don't, we, I think just scheduling purposes, it's probably better not to do it right now, but we could work behind the scenes to get that scheduled and...
What if we tried to do this right after Labor Day? Give you a little over a month.
In September. That's fine.
That work? That work?
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's a very good idea, even though Dustin's been interim for a while. He's permanent now. He probably wants to settle just a little bit more and give his board some time to think about this meeting coming up.
Seems like a...
Good.
Well, and, and I think this is also an opportunity for us to look at our general policies of the allocations, if they are going to continue to be those in the future. I would like to have some sort of policy change, I suppose, before our new city manager comes on board. Like I said, I, I just think my philosophy of, and I'm not including Heart of Danville in this necessarily, but some of this, this leads to the bigger discussion of our other nonprofit allocations, and I think we also need to have that discussion, and that number keeps increasing, and we cannot continue for that number to increase. And our goal was to decrease it, and that has not really happened either. So, I just think our policy, because we're not picking on the Heart of Danville, we need to look at our overall policy.
To your earlier point, I wanted to clarify that the public spending test legally is that when you expend tax dollars, does it, quote, meet a public purpose test? So, you're, you, the interest that you espouse that it, that no funds go to operational costs, that is, that can be a policy decision of this commission, but it's not quite the legal test, which is, funds can certainly go to operational costs so long as those operational costs promote a public interest. So, thanks what you could do for yourself, which would certainly be any operational costs at the Heart of Danville, for instance. It may not be an operational, a satisfactory operational cost of another organization that you support, but it would be at the Heart. So, as we're considering those policy ideas, the true test is, does it meet a public purpose? That's the first one. Secondarily, how do you want your dollars to be spent? That's where you make the politis, policy decision. Do you only want to have specific capital expenditure investments? You could decide to do that. While not technically the legal test, it would be a policy decision on your part. So, I, I just wanted to...
Thank you.
Clarify that for folks who may have heard your comment to think that the city may not have allocated funds appropriately, which I know you weren't insinuating. I just felt better clarifying. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've gotten a long way from paying of the bills, but I guess before I call for the question, I'd like to ask the city manager a question. for the question, I'd like to ask the city manager a question. Are we going to have a retreat sometime this early fall?
There may be sufficient desire, I guess, on the part of the city commission to do that. I would think optimally, though, it would be better held with the new city manager, who would be perhaps hired in time to do that, in November, early December.
Well, my, my concern after hearing this discussion tonight is that it might be better served for us to have some dialogues in a re, a retreat-type setting to deal with these types of issues rather than a regular scheduled meeting.
Well, I certainly agree that it's great anytime we can set aside time and go more in-depth, either in a workshop or a retreat, to talk about issues. And we can do that. I mean, I'm not suggesting that we avoid those in favor of waiting until the new city manager comes, but I think you'll want to have that person's input and, and participation maybe in helping set the priorities for the coming fiscal year in particular, as we don't have an unlimited amount of funding available. And, you know, we can do a certain amount of that, but I think ideally, you would have that workshop or retreat with the, with the newly hired city manager early in his appointment, his or her appointment time.
That's French for "I don't want to do it."[1006.02][1006.02](Laughter)
Thank you, Mr. Cott. Oh, no. My thought just is, it seems like there's a gamut of things that we need to discuss beyond just at these time periods, but...
Let's work, we'll work on that.
Yeah. I'd call for the question on, the motion on the floor, the payment of the bills for July 22nd.
Motion made. For the question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item six, this is resolution number 2019-07-22-02. This is a bid award for access control. Mr. Warren, there you are.
Yeah, they let you out of the dungeon, man.
They let you out of the basement.
So, staff recently solicited bids for retrofit kits for access control panels. These are the controls that control the security in the city hall and water plant, all the door, the, everything you five in on or try to, but are not allowed to. They've been in place for about a little over 10 years. They were put in when this building was built. We've had two within the last about three months completely die on us, and we're not able to get parts anymore. So rather than replace them entirely, we're going to retrofit them at a lower price. In seeking to purchase them, we found a federal government pricing that was around $4,300 per panel. In getting ready to purchase, we found out that by bidding them out, we can get them cheaper. We got them, solicited bids, had two that requested specs. Unfortunately, we only got one request back in the amount of, let us see, I just had it here, $3,3,508.80 per panel for savings of $791.20 per panel. So over 10 panels, you're getting close to about $8,000 savings.
Is there a motion to this effect from anyone?
I move to approve resolution 2019-07-22-02.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item seven is resolution 2019-07-22-03. This is a grant amendment on the EDA grant. And, Mr. Castle?
Mr. Castle. Not coming up. There we go. Sorry about that. Earl is on a well-earned vacation. It was dependent on his daughter's competition this past Friday, so he couldn't avoid the, he couldn't attend the meeting tonight. So I'm covering for him on this particular item. Basically, that they got such a good deal on the bid for the last work that was being done, he turned around and added on the next stuff that needed to be done, 6,800 feet of 12-inch water main that'll improve the service and reliability in that area. So we're just asking for the amendment, asking for approval on it.
Thank you, sir. Do we hear a motion?
So moves. To approve.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item eight is resolution 2019-07-22-04. This is the paving list for this summer. Continue on, Mr. Castle.
Yes, sir. This is, just like you said, continuing on. These were a few items left over from what we tried to do this spring with the amount of money we had. We're going to do about another $100,000 of work this summer, and then sit on that until this coming spring and pick up anything that needs to be done and use the rest of the money on other projects at the time. Magnolia, Berkeley is something requested by the housing authority. Church Street over here is to help fix some stuff that was issues with some of the work being done. Sycamore and Quisenberry across the viaduct there is to help improve some stuff in that neighborhood. So we'll get as much done with the $100,000 as we can, and then pick up where we leave off again in the spring.
Thank you, sir. Do we hear a motion?
I'll move to accept resolution number 2019-07-22-04.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item nine will be resolution number 2019-07-22-05. This is the Main Street, Streetscape contract amendment. Continue, sir.
Yes, sir. This is for QK4, our architect on the job. There's additional work that was added to their scope. They designed everything, and then we asked them to make a lot of changes and stuff that were, some things were prompted by the designs of the firehouse and things that were changing there. This is basically in some way shifting quantities and different things, but there was just additional work that the architects had to do to, to change the design and administer some other changes.
Thank you, sir. Do we hear a motion?
I'll for motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
This is a total of $4,000, is that right, gentlemen?
It's not a lot, but I do have a couple of questions. I'm sure you can just clarify them for me. When I look at the letter to Mr. Coffee, they're asking for more money naturally, but they also, and again, you can probably clarify, there was a deletion on the project. So would that not, like, be you always?
Well, it'd be great, but we added on to it as well. So, like I said, we shifted some of the quantities. The area in front of the art center, I think I used the proper term, was added to the project. Like I said, we're shifting quantities from some that were taken out back here at the firehouse and moved up to there. Other things were, because of things of that nature, the architects had to revisit an area, recheck things, redo some drawings and that sort of thing. So bottom line for that right there is, this is taking care of the architect. And the future will be last change order on the overall project where we'll finalize quantities. And theoretically, that should be a smaller amount than the original post. But the architect's done more work.
They did more work, but they also didn't do some work, correct?
I think, let me clarify that. I think I can do that. So when the project changed and things were taken out, drawings were redone and reevaluated, so that's the work. So it's not a typical quantity like pipe being removed from a project. It's actually additional work to take something out on the drawing side.
Okay, I'm lost.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
We've got the motion.
Well, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank Earl and John about the way they explained these three resolutions to us. I was, could read them, and first time through, pretty much understand what they were trying to do. So thanks for the good work.
Item 10...
They always told me to be brief and amazing.[1475.02][1475.02](Laughter)
Be brief and amazing.
You must be doing Earl's stuff for him, then.
Item 10 is the second reading of ordinance number 1932. This is a parking ordinance amendment. Mr. Dexter?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading of ordinance number 1932, which I'll read into the record. It's an ordinance amending City of Danville, Kentucky Code of Ordinance, Section 17-178, regarding the immobilization of motor vehicles after receipt of three unpaid parking citations, so as to establish a $50 fee for said immobilization. Again, as discussed last time, this is what allows the city to charge $50 for putting a boot on a car that has three unpaid parking citations.
We could boot it before, but we just couldn't charge you anything, right?
That's correct.
I'll offer motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1932.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Anybody.
Anybody? Anybody in the audience want to do roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Terry. Yes. Mayor Paris.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cottle.
Yes.
Mr. Serres.
Yes.
Thank you.
We should state our, our city clerk is currently attending some training.
Item 11 is the second reading of ordinance number 1933. This is an amendment about the grass and weeds season. Continue, Mr. Dexter.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, this is an ordinance amending City of Danville, Kentucky Code of Ordinance, Section 8-1, revising the growing season in which vegetation is prohibited from exceeding 12 inches. Again, this is a second reading. Previously, there was a growing season established.
This removes that.
This removes it and makes it 12 inches all year long.
Do we hear a motion?
So move.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Terry? Yes. Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Mr. Serres?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Item 12 is ordinance number 1934. This is a court enforcement officer amendment. Mr. Dexter?
For the record, this is an ordinance amending the general definition in the City of Danville, Kentucky Code of Ordinances of Court Enforcement Officer to include the Director of Planning and Zoning and the Planning and Zoning Citation Officer. This is a second reading of ordinance number 1934.
Do we hear a motion?
I move for approval of second reading of 1934.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Serres?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Terry? Yes.
Does Steve get to keep a bullet in his pocket now?
Go get them, Barney.
Nice guys.
Item 13 is the second reading of ordinance number 1935. This is an amendment with respect to the Board of Architectural Review. Mr. Dexter?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, this is an ordinance amending the City of Danville's existing ordinance pertaining to historic districts in order to specify the educational and attendance requirements of members serving on the Board of Architectural Review. This is the second reading.
Is there a motion? Motion's made.
Second.
Motion seconded, motion's made. No further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Mr. Serres?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Terry? Yes. Mayor Paris?
Yes. That concludes our agenda for the evening. I understand there is no need for an executive session.
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? The Downtown Critical Mass webinar, 31st of July, I don't have a time for it.
7:30.
At the library, right?
At the library.
11:30 until 1? And I also wanted to say, I think we did not actually congratulate Mr. Duvall on his new position. I apologize for getting off track. Congratulations to you, and we look forward to working with you.
It's only fair, Commissioner Terry, with two here in the poll, because we have two commissioner comments, so congratulations, Dustin.
Seeing if there's no other business?
I move to adjourn.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Have a good evening.